Join us with an invocation, trustee Gibbons.
Please bow your head for an invocation, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, this time, this opportunity. We thank you for this college and all of its endeavors and everything that it tries to do. Bless its faculty and staff, its leadership, and everyone that works here, Lord. Make us as a board better and help us to make wise and strong decisions. Bless our coming and our going to and from this place. In Jesus' name, in whom I pray, and in whom's name you may pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For recognitions, our SPC spotlight. Dr. Williams?
Yes. Am I, is my mic on? I want to recognize, last month I missed a colleague of ours, Valentina Berry, is the Director of SPC's Corporate Training. And she and one of our former students, Samir Qureshi, was listed in the Tampa Magazine as one of the 2021 Top 10 and Under 40. And we always applaud our colleagues and people we work with. And I want to definitely recognize her as well as one of our former students who the college is working with online tutoring for being named as one of Tampa Bay's Top 10. Another person, Davy Gill, was inducted into the Florida College System Activities Association Hall of Fame. He was selected by student life and leadership team members who feel that he's made a huge contribution to the college. So I'm very proud of him. And then the last spotlight that I think is so important is that our Public Policy and Administration Program is celebrating its 10th year. Under the leadership of Jeff Kronchnabel, he has been able to have a 90% placement rate of our students in public policy. And so we're very proud of him and the work that's been done. Those are our spotlights today.
Great, thank you. Moving on to comments. And just before we get started, we do have some public comment cards. We have a couple of trustees who have meetings immediately after this meeting. And we want to be sure we can get through all of our business for voting. So for those who have provided comment cards for items not on the agenda, we're going to reserve those until the end of the meeting, which I don't think it's going to be a hugely long meeting, but we want to be sure we get through everything. So when we get to public comment, if you have filled out a, I don't have any cards for items on the agenda, but if there is one necessary, please let me know. But I just wanted to let you all know that because I want to be sure we get through our voting business as well, because I know that you all have some things to speak about. We look forward to hearing those. So with respect to my comments, I wanted to thank the FGO and Mr. Briggs and his team for having me at the FGO Senate Meeting last week. It was apparently the first time a trustee had been invited to speak at the FGO meeting. And it was, it was a nice meeting. They, I only gave some brief words about the board and then took questions that just talked about what the role of a trustee is. Some very good questions with respect to vaccinating our healthcare students and our faculty who are out in the field as frontline workers, but may not be aligned with the hospital to then avail themselves of the vaccines. So I heard you, I will be getting back on together with that. Some questions about our real estate. So it was a nice meeting, so we appreciate that. I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Gill on his induction to the Hall of Fame. And I'm glad you mentioned Mr. Kronchnabel. I said this before, a couple of years ago at a meeting. As somebody who attends my fair share of public hearings at local government, at least once a month, there's somebody from Mr. Kronchnabel's class who's speaking at one of the meetings during the public comment. And it's always wonderful to hear them. And it always makes me so proud when they stand up and say that they are part of the SPC Public Policy Program. So congratulations. Excellent. Yes. Mr. Kidwell?
I don't have a lot to add, but I would like to also say congratulations to Mr. Gill on the Hall of Fame induction. I echo Katie's comments there and with everything else she said.
Vice Chair Bello?
I'm good.
You're good? Trustee Gibbons?
I'll wave.
Mr. Stone Cypher?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a quick second here and really say thank you to our foundation. We've had a lot of good productive meetings in the last couple of months. And you know, I was reminded in our, our last meeting via Zoom how much work the foundation has done for the college, especially over the past year during COVID. It hasn't been easy on anybody, but trying to communicate the, the advantages of St. Petersburg College, what we bring to the community, what our needs are, trying to communicate that without being face to face with someone or having a lot of that networking time that they would normally have is difficult and hard to do. Through January of 2021, the foundation's raised over $3.69 million, which puts them over their goal for the fiscal year already.
Great.
1.3 million of that went to student scholarships, 2.1 million for college program support. And then the Titan Fund makes up the remaining piece. But I just wanted to say thanks to Chair Shepherd, Jesse, of course, past Chair Mike Carroll. The group does a fantastic job. They're passionate. And I think there's a lot more we can do together in the future as we kind of continue on down this road of, of us being more in tune with what they're doing and them with what we're doing. So thank you to the foundation.
Thank you. Dr. Williams?
Yes. Right before our board meeting last month, we were told that we have also made some new strides in the U.S. News Online Program Rankings. SPC was a part of the best online bachelor's program overall. We ranked 75 in the nation, 11th in Florida, and third in the Florida College System. And only 14 Florida colleges made that ranking. Only two of those were Florida College System institutions. We also placed best online bachelor's program for business. We ranked 65 in the nation, sixth in Florida, and number one in the Florida College System. Only two Florida colleges in the college system, other than us, ranked. And third, we ranked 48th in the nation as best online bachelor's programs for veterans, eighth in Florida, and third in the Florida College System. 10 Florida institutions made that ranking. And only two other Florida college system schools were in that with us. And so I want to thank the faculty. I want to thank Dr. Leal Troth, the online support team for all that they have done to help us gain those rankings and help students succeed. I know that this one is a big deal as we continue to move and grow in online learning and in the online platform. So good job to our faculty and our support staff. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yep.
All right. With that, I, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we'll reserve public comment until after our voting items. So did the board have a chance to review the minutes? And is there a motion for approval?
So we accept the minutes as provided to us, Madam Chair?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do not have a report this morning.
Thank you. And the strategic focus with Ms. Hunt that we have been waiting for ever since we started this time. So you're on the big stage now this morning.
All right. Well, good morning Chair Cole, Board Trustees, and Dr. Williams. This morning, I'm excited to present this annual financial report. This report really includes updates of our financial health of our college. You have seen plenty of information on the operating budget and even reviewed the annual audited financial statements. But today, we plan on sharing highlights with you from the financial 1920 statements, also some key performance indicators that include our debt and current ratios, which looks at the liquidity of our resources, and also compare them to industry standards. As a fresh look at the operating budget, you normally see the operating budget by general ledger accounting codes. But today, you will see the budget to actuals by function or activity. Instead of looking at expenses such as supplies, services, and printing, it looks at expenses that support instruction, physical plant operations, and administrative costs. We're beginning to scratch, scratch the surface on analyzing the data in this way. And we'll continue to do that as we have conversations with our leadership. With me today, I have Dr. Hector Laura, the AVP of Budgeting, and Mike Meggs, the AVP of Finance Accounting and Business Services. Before getting started, I would like to thank Mike Meggs, the finance team, and all the departments that contribute in our financial statement audit. Again, we've continued the trend with having a perfect and clean finance audit for our fiscal year 1920. With that, I'll hand it over to Mike Meggs.
Thank you, Janet. Good morning. Chair Cole, Board Trustees, Dr. Williams. All right, let's get started. First, let's take a look at our Statement of Net Position, which is also known as a balance sheet. Net position is defined as assets minus liabilities. And in the for-profit arena, this would be classified as equity. SPC's net position decreased by $8.1 million to $195.7 million, primarily due to increases in pension and other post-employment benefits, totaling about $7.2 million. These are required entries by actuaries and have little to no effect on our operating budget or cash. This post-employment benefit liability is specific to future health insurance benefits to our retirees. And we anticipate this liability to be reduced next year, next fiscal year, due to the college's transition to the Health Insurance Consortium. Next, let's take a look at capital assets. Our gross capital assets totaled $449.3 million at fiscal year-end 2019-20 and is made up of non-depreciable assets such as land and construction in progress, $47.7 million in depreciable assets such as buildings, furniture and equipment, other structures and improvements. And together, those total $401.6 million. Total accumulated depreciation of $173.8 million brings our total net capital assets to $275.5 million compared to $273 million last year. Next, we're going to take a look at our debt administration. For fiscal year 2019-20, the college had $17.6 million in outstanding capital improvement, debt payable, and capital leases payable, representing a decrease of about $2.1 million or 10.7% over the prior year. The debt is made up of several items, one being the State Board of Education Capital Outlay Bonds of $1.1 million, Florida Department of Education Capital Improvement Revenue Bonds of $13.9 million, and capital leases payable of $2.6 million. The bonds have a maturity date of 2030 and financed several large construction projects, including, you might remember, the Clearwater Ethics Building, the library, and several other projects. The bond purchases occurred in 2006 and 2010. And the college has not incurred any additional bond debt since, and these will all be paid off by 2030. The debt will be reduced by approximately $2.2 million in this current fiscal year. And that will bring the principal balance down to about $15.4 million. So you can see we're still making good progress on our debt. Next, we're going to take a look at some key performance indicators and how SPC compares to higher education industry standards and benchmarks. The first indicator is the current ratio. And the current ratio measures liquidity of an institution. To calculate, calculate this ratio, we take current assets over current liabilities. And SPC's current ratio came in at 2.45, which simply means that for every dollar of liability, there's $2.45 to pay it. The higher education target rate is at least 2.0, so SPC has exceeded that benchmark. Next, we have the capitalization ratio. And this ratio measures our financial flexibility by not only looking at the current period's return on assets, but also accumulated return on assets from prior periods. The ratio is calculated by taking net assets and dividing it by total assets. SPC's capitalization ratio at fiscal year-end was 57.7%, which exceeds the higher education industry standard target rate of at least 50%. So we are on target there as well. Next, we're going to take a look at our debt ratio. This measures the extent of an institution's leverage. It is defined as the ratio of total debt to total assets and is considered the proportion of an institution's assets that are financed by debt. SPC's debt ratio for fiscal year-end was .052 or 5.2%. And for comparative purposes, we put up a three-year, three-year-old debt ratio was at 7.7%. And the current fiscal year projection will be approximately 4.5%. So you can see our continued progress in moving our debt down. This particular performance indicator does not have an industry benchmark due to every institution having their own operational model. It is for internal purposes, though, to track and monitor our debt and how it aligns with our strategic direction. The last indicator we're going to take a look at is the gross tuition contribution ratio. The gross contribution ratio provides analysis about an institution's revenues by source. Heavily tuition-dependent institutions are particularly vulnerable to changes in enrollment patterns. These revenues are measured against an institution's total operating and total non-operating expenses. SPC's gross tuition contribution ratio came in at 41.6%. And the target rate for all of higher education is less than 60%. Next, we're going to take a look at our cash and cash equivalents in our operating fund. At fiscal year-end, June 30-20, SPC had $27.3 million in our operating fund. And that was made up of cash of $10.5 million to support operations, investments in SBA Florida Prime of $14.2 million, investment in the Special Purpose Investment Account, also known as SPEA, of $1 million, and money market investments of about $1.7 million. As you can see, the college's operating cash flow has improved over the last several years. However, the current year, we are projecting a drop-down to about $22 million due to the pandemic and the impact on state funding, as well as our enrollment. The college's goal of cash on hand is about 90 days of operating cash. And that equates to about $33 to $35 million. So we still have some work to do there. How do we get there? The plan is to continue to the efforts we have made over the last four years, continue to make changes to our business model, and focus on the Financial Vitality Guidance in the upcoming three-year strategic plan, which includes employing entrepreneurial practices, improving data integrity, and to inform decision-making and optimize facility and technology usage. Now I'm going to pause and answer any questions before I turn it over to Dr. Laura.
Any questions so far?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, Dr. Williams. I first would like to thank the Lord for the opportunity to be here today. I would like to restate what Janet mentioned. We will look at the operating budget by function activity. For the accounting manual of the Florida College System, the organizational units of each fund are grouped together according to the function that they perform. And you might wonder, what does that mean? For example, covering expenses for materials and supply totaled $3.8 million. By grouping by function, we can determine how much of the $3.8 million we allocated to each activity. Direct instruction includes salaries and operating costs of the academic units where the student takes classes like AMP courses, vocational, credit and non-credit, and EAP developmental education. The academic administration encompass library, student tutoring, education media services, academic administration, computing, and network. Student support include areas like financial aid, admission, and counseling. Likewise, institutional support includes salaries and operating costs related to executive management, finance department, legal services, and data management. Physical plan includes facilities and campus securities. Student financial aid assistance include fee waivers for students. Our operating budget during this presentation represents expenses by instructional and administrative functions. The pie chart represent our 2021 total budget expenses in relation to the function activity. In revenue for this term, we brought $46.7 million from student tuition and fee, which totaled 84% of the total budget for tuition and revenue. We still have enrollment for the eight weeks, short-term in March, and the summer section for May and June. For the state funding, we received $34 million. In February, current month, we will start receiving the first allocation of the lottery, which is $2 million per month for the remaining of the fiscal year. We have $2.8 million for other revenue, which encompass interest, dividend, indirect costs, and usage of facilities. Funds transferred in, we have $1.1 million. Our total revenue as of this term is $84.7 million. The next focus is our expenditures. Instructional expenditure consists of college-wide expenditure related to instructional activities. As of this period, we have $52.9 million worth of expenses, from which $49.3 million is associated with salaries and benefits, representing 58% of the total instructional salaries and benefits. For expenses in capital, we have $3.5 million. On the other hand, administrative function consists of activities undertaken to provide the necessary services on a college-wide basis. As of January 31st, we incurred $21.2 million, from which $10.7 million is related to salaries and benefits, representing 48% of the total administrative functions. For expenses in capital, we incurred $10.5 million. Our total expenses as of this term is $74.2 million, resulting in a positive variance of $10.5 million. We will see this variant decrease during the following month. Overall, for this term, salaries and benefits totaled $60 million, for which $49.3 million correspond to total instructional, which includes salaries and benefits related to direct instruction, academic support, and student support. $10.7 million correspond to administrative, which includes salaries and benefits related to institutional support, facilities, and security, representing 56% of the total budget in salaries and benefit. During December, we have three pay periods, which increase the year-to-date percentage in salary in relation to the total budget. For expenses in capital, we have $14 million. $10.5 million correspond to total administrative, and $3.5 million is related to total instructional. However, within the $10.5 million of total administrative, we have $6 million for fixed costs, things like utilities, worker comp, general liability, property, and casualty insurance, IT software, and we dedicated $1.9 million in scholarships. We continue to have our budget specialist meeting with the budget manager to help them on meeting their financial goals by promoting collaboration across department. I would like to pause and answer any question that you might have. I would like to bring next Ms. Janet Hunt, BPO Finance and Business Operation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So where we are today really is directly connected with what we've done over the last few years. We certainly would not have moved through 2020 as smoothly as we did without the guidance from you, the board, and the leadership of President Williams. So I first want to kind of go through some of the things we've done over the last four years. We definitely would have seen a different report today if we would not have done some of those things. First, looking at our Modified Zero-Based Budgeting Implementation. Four years ago, we presented to you the Budget Realignment Plan. This year, this plan included reviewing our physical footprint, reducing expenses, and redesigning our facilities rental model. In 2019, we implemented the Modified Zero-Based Budgeting, saving over $700,000 in current and capital expense. It also increased the involvement of our managers by budgeting processes for, which included them in the planning and also accountability. We've reviewed properties and continue to review our physical footprint to streamline square footage utilization to meet our needs. Currently, the District Office Building is under contract and targeted to close in May of this year. Over the last five years, the college's operating fund balance has increased by 3.9%. We have maintained the 7% minimum required by the state. If you remember, a couple of years ago, the Florida colleges were required to match the fund balance at that 7%, meaning that if we were to go under, we had to submit a plan as to how we would get to 7%. If we were to go over, we also had to submit a plan as to how we would spend down to the 7%. In fiscal year 1920, there was an emergency order that suspended that requirement. Moving forward, we're interested to hear from the state if this will be an extension of the suspension or how this will impact the current and the upcoming year. It is important to remember with a strong fund balance, it really helps to prepare for emergencies. For example, hurricanes that will impact greatly our fund balance. We did have a couple of our colleges that were impacted, and it really did put a strain on their fund balance. So this is important to continue to grow. In other industries, the fund balance would be similar to the cash balance where you would want a minimum of three months' supply, which is approximately versus the 7% that the state is asking. It would be more of a 25%. We moved into a health insurance model that was more sustainable by joining the consortium January 1st, able to continue to offer our employees competitive health benefits. We enhanced our facility rental model, which increased that revenue 70% in the first year it was implemented. Doing this let us know that the model was effective. Unfortunately, in the second year, we were impacted by the pandemic, which halted that stream of revenue. We plan to continue post-pandemic to increase those revenues. Other things like, as trustee Stone Cypher mentioned, the foundation has supported the college, not just in scholarships, but in other needs. Vice President Jesse Turtle led the Titan Fund Campaign last year. And we also continue to go after more impactful grants. Last spring, we shared with you our need to change our business model. We used to look at current year enrollment to compare it to our prior year enrollment. Although there is importance to looking at that, we focused on the current year goals to compare it to the current year expenses. This helped the enrollment management, marketing, academics, and leadership focus on what was needed to sustain fiscally in the current year and be able to make changes as needed. This, in the past couple of years, we also increased our fiscal transparency. This year, we included several other avenues as to how we shared our financial information, such as town halls, regular financial memos to the college family, as Hector mentioned, monthly meetings with our managers, better dashboards to track our budget actuals, and also including presentations such as this. We also expanded our finance committee to departments such as institutional advancement, grants, and our governmental relations director, Eric Eddy. And we continue to look at growing that committee and discuss clear and specific financial goals for the college. goals for the college. So what are we facing in the upcoming fiscal year? State funding. Currently this year, we have a six percent holdback. That's approximately four point three million dollars. The holdback was allocated to our general revenue and our trust fund, which is our lottery funding. Also, our special programming funding was reduced from the General Appropriation Act. That included two million dollars for our collegiate high school and seven hundred and twenty-five thousand for nursing simulation. The governor released his recommended budget about three weeks ago, which included a reduction to the Florida college systems of eighteen point nine million. Line item for St. Petersburg College was one point eight million. There are still many questions as to how the holdback will impact the next year's budget. As you know, it is very early in the process, and we still have a long way to go, still waiting on the House and the Senate to release their recommended budgets. You also heard about a press release a couple weeks before the governor's budget that communicated that the Florida college systems and the universities would share a reduction of about three hundred and fifty-seven million dollars, which was part of the two-point billion-dollar reduction to the state budget. If that happens, we're looking at approximately four to five million dollar reduction to our budget. Where this will land between the one point eight and the five million is still unknown. It is important to mention, though, that if the holdback ends up being a cut and not a holdback, there is a possibility that there would be the cut plus the additional reduction for the next year, which could be up to ten million dollars. We also need to remember that the shift between our general revenue and our lottery is something we need to watch out for. As we know, the lottery funding comes in in February, which definitely will impact our cash flows. We will keep a close watch as we move through the session and definitely keep you informed with updates. We have received funding, approximately twenty-nine million dollars for the second wave of stimulus money. Six point two four is direct aid to students, the remainder for institutional purposes. We're currently waiting on guidelines as to how to spend that funding. We also don't know how it will impact the state appropriations. We're currently running models on how enrollment will trend for the next year. As you know, this year, we budgeted with the pandemic in mind, and we came to meet that budget, actually exceed it just by a little bit over the fall and the spring semesters. Next year, will things will impact us such as the COVID vaccine, how that will drive enrollment versus face-to-face or online, and if students will return. Some of the other factors that we want to look at that will impact us in the next year is our risk management insurance, which is planned to increase by eighteen percent. That's four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. We've seen this trend over the last couple of years. In the last year, it increased by twelve percent. This is our workers' comp, our property, casualty insurance, and any of our non-medical insurance. We currently are part of the Florida Consortium when it comes to these expenses and are already sharing costs. Some of the couple other colleges that are not part of the consortium are seeing much larger increases than eighteen percent. We also continue to see the shift of our retirement liabilities. Just in this current year, we've seen a million-dollar shift of the liability from the state to the colleges, and we'll probably continue to see that over the next couple of years. Lastly, depending on final decisions made in session this spring about the holdback, we plan to submit to you an updated budget or budget amendment for the current fiscal year. We're hoping within the first couple weeks of the session, they will address the holdback of whether it is a holdback or a cut and how it will impact us. Any questions?
Questions?
Sorry. I don't have a question, I just have some comments. Thank you for the work on this. I know we've already talked individually with you with what we've seen here today. So we got a sneak peek, which I was grateful for. And I can't remember exactly, but I believe when I first got on the board, our budget for revenue between tuition, state dollars, everything, I think, Deborah, was it around one hundred and fifty-eight, one hundred and sixty million dollars? So now you're looking at a budget of one hundred and forty million dollars. We're probably talking about twenty million dollars, give or take, in a four-and-a-half-year span, however long I've been here. So the fact that we have a team here who's been able to work through that kind of reduction in revenue, that kind of reduction in students as far as semester hours, with all the changes that we've seen going on with COVID, with hurricanes, with leadership changes, it's amazing that you all have stayed dedicated, and not just your team, Janet, but everyone at the college who has pitched in to make sure that we are setting ourselves up to be as healthy as possible for the long term so that we can be here in forty, fifty, and sixty years. And it's not fun, what you guys are having to do and the decisions we're having to make, but it's necessary. And I think it's going to make us grow much stronger roots for whatever the future holds so that we can continue to ride out things like million dollars and question marks of state funding, and what are we getting and what are we not, and where is it coming from, and what can it be applied to? We don't know that for last year, this year, or the next year, or things like COVID that may happen. So there has been a lot, and this bleeds into everything, health insurance, personnel, I mean, every single square inch of the college is affected by what these numbers look like. So breaking it down like this, for us to dig in even deeper, to have an even better idea of what the overall picture looks like is very, very beneficial. Thank you for all the work that you guys have put into this. And just to go back to an earlier slide, debt ratio of five point two percent is pretty awesome. So to settle that question, that's an amazing number. But we have a long way to go. It's gonna, it would be great to get that operating fund consistently at ninety days, which I think we can do in the next four or five years, but I'll end it there.
Madam Chair. I'd like to commend the staff, Dr. Williams and Ms. Hunt, and Dr. Laura and Mike Meggs on a job well done. I know a couple of years ago, everybody was looking at me with crossed eyes and like, what are you talking about? And I remember distinctly what the comment was. I said, you know, we don't know the health of the college. This allows us to know what the health of the organization is financially. And if we continue to look at these type of, look at the college from this perspective and do these types of checks across the board, not just in financial matters, but across the board, then we're going to be a healthier college. And I agree with Trustee Stone Cypher, we'll be here for forty or fifty years down the road to be able to provide the necessary services and degrees and other things that we need to for our citizens. Thank you.
I forgot to mention, no tuition increases either.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all three very much, and I echo both Trustee Gibbons and Trustee Stone Cypher's comments. And just from the board, I think something Dr. Williams and Ms. Hunt and I talk about, they probably like want to strangle me every time I say it, is how our budget's aligning with our strategic plan. And since I've joined the board, there wasn't a collective strategic plan four years ago. And so now, I think we've gone through one cycle of a three-year plan. We've been able to look almost in retrospect as to how our budget has aligned with that strategic plan. And so I look forward to seeing now, moving forward, as we adopt our strategic plan, literally putting our money where our mouth is and ensuring that our budget continues to align with that plan. And so you all have done that behind the scenes and come a long way to be sure that the priorities of the board and the priorities of the college are being funded. But I'm excited in these next two years budget cycle, with our strategic plan being more refined, to actually be able to have that document as part of the budget process and say, okay, how are we moving forward? So thank you very much for that.
And I'd also like to draw to your attention, before I sit down, you each should have a finance brochure that we mentioned a lot of the highlights, but something to take with you that includes the full report.
And I also want to say thank you for the cheat sheet of acronyms and statements. When we were having our one-on-one, I said, well, is this like a ballot sheet? Is this like a net loss statement? So for people who are not in the education world and dealing with state budgets, but for this one, it's nice to be able to compare that to what we're used to seeing in our own businesses. So thank you.
Also, Madam Chair, I want to applaud the team, because I know I've been pushing pretty hard over the last six, seven months. Where is it? How are we? Where are we going? And you guys came through with flying colors. I think the other piece to the work that we have done with a declining budget is keeping the quality of work moving forward and being able to shift and move and utilize technology to assist us to do an even better job. And so you'll see, when we talk about putting our money where our mouth is or our values are, you will see us bringing information back to strengthen our technology ability here at the college, to improve our teaching pedagogy, to improve our student support, the things that will help students succeed. I'm most proud of this report that shows that we have worked diligently during very vicarious and difficult times, and we're still working through the unknown. We're still putting things in place, not quite knowing where we're going to land. But I assure you that the budget and finance team is on the job, and we're keeping up with what's happening in Tallahassee. So I'm very, very, very proud.
Thank you very much. And congratulations on our clean audit, too. Hate to not say that. Very good. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Were there any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept all the items on the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. I do want to make a correction, just for the record. At FGO last week, I did receive the question about whether there would be a net profit on the DO sale, and my response was yes, a small one, excluding all of the future savings of all of the reasons why we disposed of it. I do want to recognize that with today's action, we're now aligning, so depending on how construction costs go, there might not be a closing statement net profit. So I did want to be sure I said that, because I said exactly the opposite last week, and it was before I looked at my agenda packet. But I also just wanted to reiterate that I'm proud of this board. I think that was a hard decision to make regardless of the profit on that building, but the potential savings or the planned savings and from an operational standpoint, together with the synergies that will be built by putting the staff that was in DO on some of the other campuses, I still feel very strongly that it's the right decision. So I just wanted to highlight that. Informational reports that are in your packet, I don't know if Trustee Kidwell or Vice Chair Bello, I know Trustee Stone Cypher already spoke about the foundation. I don't know if you all have any updates or want to highlight anything in the reports for Leva Ratner or ISPS. You don't have to, I just didn't, didn't want to leave you out there.
Yeah, we had our board meeting last week. Everything seems to be going in a positive direction.
Great. Thanks. And the Palladium's been getting some nice press lately as well, so congratulations. This is a very trying time for all our fine arts institutions, so between the museum and the Palladium, it's nice to read those reports. There are no proposed changes to the rules manual, and so we'll move on.
I'm going to take the question.
Let's, let's go ahead and do public com, if the board's okay, we'll do public comment now before our president's report, and that way we can continue on.
Four.
We have four, so I think there should be time for our trustees who needed to leave. So Jamaica, I can't read your last name, I'm sorry. Reddick? Thank you, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Good morning.
I couldn't tell if that was a CK at the end or something else, so. It's cool, I scrubbed a bit. No problem, we have three minutes on the board, so. Very cool. Thank you for being here.
You know, thank you for having me. I've met some of you, but as I said before, my name is Jamaica. I am the union representative for the St. Petersburg College Adjunct Contingent Faculty on behalf of SEIU Florida Public Services Union. I really want to say thank you, first of all, because I've worked with adjunct contingent faculty for the larger part of six years, and I can't say that every administration has worked with us in the way that St. Petersburg College has. Adjunct faculty here take home so much of their work, they perform emotional labor, they tutor, they provide a variety of services to their students, and when they're not actually teaching, they're preparing course materials on top of spending time at additional jobs in the area. And at this time, it's estimated over fifty percent of actual faculty in the country are adjuncts. So when we originally put the one hundred and fifty-dollar course cancellation fee into the contract, that served not so much as a raise, but recognition of work that adjuncts had already performed when they were creating the course. It's something that would only benefit adjuncts in the event that the course was canceled within two weeks of its start. And beyond that, as a union, we continuously advocate not just for public service employees, but really all of the institutions in which we're involved. We're currently actually running a people's budget review, and that's a part of a larger program to advocate for more funding on a state and the federal level for our public institutions to support you all and support all of us in creating more, a more equitable workplace for all of us. Because at the end of the day, we just truly want to see better working conditions for everyone, and we see St. Petersburg College and working with the Board of Trustees as a partnership. We truly look forward to continuing to work together, and we hope that we can have the contracts ratified and move forward, and we just look forward to continuing to move forward together. So thank you for your time, and I hope y'all have a good rest of your day.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Franks?
Good morning, and thank you. My name is Javon. I also work with the adjunct faculty, not just here at St. Pete, but across the Tampa Bay area. And I would actually like to start with a letter we received from the Full-Time Faculty Union that is the organizing committee here at St. Pete College. And it says that "We, the UFF at St. Pete College Faculty Organizing Committee, stand in solidarity with our colleagues, the SPC adjunct faculty, as they organize to improve their working conditions. Adjunct faculty play a vital role in our learning community and in supporting the college's mission. They deserve fair compensation and respect for their contributions and continued success of our students. We are disappointed that the Board of Trustees rejected a successfully negotiated faculty contract over a hundred and fifty-dollar cancellation fee that is standard in most union contracts. We do not believe that the payment for work done constitutes a raise or that it in any way is related to full-time faculty going without salary increases for more than five years. The projected cost to compensate adjunct faculty for canceled classes at this low rate is estimated to cost a college less than one thousand dollars per academic year and does not represent a deep financial burden even during a pandemic. We are one faculty, working together to improve the college, and central, and central to that is fair compensation and union representation. Faculty working conditions are students' learning conditions, so we urge the Board of Trustees to support our college and our community by approving the already negotiated and ratified adjunct faculty contract." I would add to that, a thank you to the St. Pete College Administration, President Williams, and their bargaining team for really working in a collaborative way with the adjuncts union to bring about a great contract. The list of accolades that were highlighted at the beginning of the meeting were achieved in no small part thanks to the adjuncts, who aren't just picking up extra in no small part thanks to the adjuncts, who aren't just picking up extra courses or doing the one specialty course. They make up a significant portion of the faculty and the classes taught here. Adjuncts do not get to part-time grade papers. They don't get to part-time respond to students' emails, and they don't get to part-time prepare for courses. They are doing the work. I asked the trustees to support the work of its own administration and ratify the contract brought forth with the adjunct faculty. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Javon, thank you so much. You said that that was a letter from the full-time faculty.
That was from the union being organized by the full-time faculty.
Okay, how many people sit on that committee?
I don't know, I have not worked.
So the letter was just from the union, the folks that want to be unionized?
From the full-time faculty.
From the committee.
How many people serve?
About 24.
Is it about 24 of them? Okay.
Thank you.
I just thought that was interesting, because I received way more calls than and letters from folks in the full-time faculty saying, "Thank you for supporting them and the effort that we took and the action that we took," as opposed to, but Mr. Javon, I forget your last name, I'm sorry.
Franks.
Franks, Mr. Franks just gave us, and so I was wondering how many people were actually on that committee? So it's 24, so. How many faculty do we have?
Like 360? They represent a lot more.
Okay.
Well, I think the critical thing, sir, is that the contract was worked on by the administration here at St. Pete College. It was, and not only is that, but the $150 class cancellation fee is standard in contracts across the state.
Well, we don't have a contract for adjunct faculty?
No, you don't, but the contracts that have gone in place at other institutions like yours, Hillsborough Community College, Miami-Dade College, Broward College, and the University of South Florida, all have included the class cancellation fee because it's compensation for work that was done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fernetta? Good morning.
My name is Sonia Fernetta, and I'm an adjunct at St. Pete College, teaching developmental writing, composition. I've been active with the FPSU Union Bargaining Committee, and I really enjoyed the process of working with our union leaders and the administration to come up with a good contract. Before I make a statement, I just wanted to explain that the $150 fee is not a pay raise. We know this is COVID time, and we're having problems with funding and education. We specifically did not ask for a raise, and we were acknowledged for that by the administration. The $150 simply pays for the work that an adjunct would do before starting a class. We call it prep. Usually, when you're at two weeks before a class starts, you have to do quite a bit of prep to start the class. Just to let you know that that particular amount was negotiated down from another amount we proposed. I don't think that the $150 would apply to very many people, because most classes are canceled before two weeks. And we even had a discussion with administrators about the number of weeks which was negotiated down. This is really the lowest number of weeks before a class starts. So it's a fee for work done before a class starts, not a raise. My statement is the following. This process of collective bargaining is very important to adjuncts, because it's a way to participate in the college. We want to have a contract. That's why we voted for a union. Collective bargaining is a way to work with the college. We want to work with full-timers, we want to work with administration, we want to work with the Board of Trustees. We want to come up with a collective agreement, a contract, and we want to work together, participate in the college, be considered and respected and heard. Everyone wants to be heard. Collective bargaining will benefit the whole college. This is not selfish. We want to come up with agreements, and we want to participate in the college more. It is something we never had before. We want to be partners in the college and create better conditions. Working through a union is simply a better position, a contract. Please accept our contract. We worked hard on it, we deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Teri Lee?
I'm Teri Lee. I was a research scientist for the Department of Interior until a few years ago, and now I'm adjunct faculty at St. Pete College in the Natural Sciences Department at Seminole. This past year, like Sonia, I worked with the Bargaining Committee on behalf of the 730 adjunct faculty to forge the current adjunct union contract with St. Pete College Administration. The adjunct workforce is roughly double the size of the full-time faculty workforce. At the last board meeting, Trustee Gibbons refused to ratify the contract because of his concern that it puts financial burden on the college during the pandemic, and he asked for 90 days to review the impact of our agreement. Understandable. Ratification of the adjunct union contract will make no difference to the SPC budget. We ask for no raise in this contract. There is a single item that has a price tag we've been talking about, a $150 fee to be paid to an adjunct instructor if their class is canceled or given away within two weeks of the start of classes. None of the other colleges with cancellation fees in their adjunct union contracts has ever paid out more than a few thousand dollars. If the matter of a cancellation fee is so piddling on a monetary front, why have it in the contract? Because when there are no raises, respect is an important commodity to teachers, especially during a pandemic. So, it is a commodity. Adjuncts rarely have their classes canceled this late, but it does sting when it happens. The department chairs, they try like mad to avoid it. They work hard to build trusting relationships with dozens of highly qualified adjunct instructors so the chairs can keep offering the courses the students need for their degrees. The cancellation fee respectfully acknowledges a truth that the instructor, by the time it's two weeks out, the instructor's already invested hours into making the syllabus, deciding the teaching schedule, researching the lecture material, talking with tech support, emailing students, arranging lab equipment. This financially inconsequential cancellation fee is a win-win for St. Pete College, the adjuncts, and the chairs. It gives the chairs an incentive to communicate earlier with adjunct faculty in ways that respect the adjunct's time and commitment. And if a cancellation is unavoidable, this gesture repairs trust in the relationship. We ask Trustee Gibbons and the board members to respect the representative will of the adjunct faculty, the full-time faculty, the St. Pete College president, and administration by accepting the contract in its present form. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. I do want to say, I'm sure Trustee Gibbons has something to say, but I appreciate, no, not to you directly, but just while Mr. Gibbons raised the issue last month, it was a collective decision among all five of us, and so I don't want anybody to be confused that this is a one person.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Leading this. I mean, I think that there's been a lot of discussion over the past, since I've been on the board the past four years, when the conversation regarding a union bubbled up, and I think each one of us in our roles as board members invited the adjunct faculty prior to unionization to come to a board meeting to discuss it. Certainly, the full-time faculty, I was shocked and surprised in the fall, in December, when I joined Dr. Williams at the meeting with full-time faculty, that we thought the purpose was to discuss what they may want in a contract, and instead, at that meeting, was simply told that they wanted Dr. Williams to ratify their perk agreement on the spot. So, I probably misstated that, but it was, which was surprising, because I think that you do, all we've heard, all I've heard from both adjunct and full-time faculty over the past three or four years, is how open and transparent both the administration and the board has been through this process. And so I just wanted to be sure everybody knew that this isn't just Mr. Gibbons looking at this and trying to understand how it fits in with the overall health of the college and the future of the college. This is collectively the board. So, we do appreciate, I also wanted to say, I especially appreciate Ms. Lee and Ms. Fernetta being here. It's nice to actually see SPC folks here as opposed to union folks. I've received, if you all haven't checked your SPC email lately, I've received one email on this topic, to my SPC email, that was a beautifully written letter, and so I appreciated that, so thank you. But thank you all for being here. Would any of the trustees like to say anything at this time?
Yes. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to echo what Katie said. Well said, Chair Cole, and we do have next steps as a board plan. So as we said at the last meeting, we are in good faith moving forward exactly how we said we would. This is not going to get left by the wayside. It is up for immediate conversation and action within our timeframe, so we're still pushing this forward. Nothing has happened to it. We understand the importance of this, so, but yes, it was a board decision last month, not just Mr. Gibbons.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Gibbons?
Thank you to the board members, and thank you, Madam Chair, for reporting that accurately. I think that there's a, is there a video or something that I asked for? Because it's interesting, the lady, the third lady, young lady, asked that, she said, and I thought that that was the perfect comment, she said, "We want to be heard." I thought that was perfect. So if you look here, it's November 15, 2016. Play that clip, please.
If there are questions, I'm happy to have them.
Well, while they're working on it, I'll tell you. There has been a.
For those who are against it, saying, "Would somebody describe exactly what that is?" I will tell you, there are any number of, you know, well, it would have been this, it would have been that, it would have been this. I'm still at a loss as to what the incident causes. You know, I'm going to speak plenty. I think all of us are, the part I couldn't dispel in good conscience was some of the activities that have taken place in colleges around us. Our friends at Manatee did some things that I, you know, I don't think this board would see itself doing, and yet that still resonates with faculty an awful lot. Are we subject to that kind of board activity, of faculty and scholism in their actions? I mean, because I don't understand, I thought that we were doing a very good job.
With faculty and staff, in terms of, because I'm the first person to stand up if there is, if there is a discrepancy in salary, or we're trying to give raises, I'm the very first person to speak up for that, and not the rest of these folks on the board, as far as I know, have done everything they can to accommodate faculty and try to be fair and equitable. And, you know, this kind of, I have to tell you, it's just like slap in the face to me personally, as a board member, when people are out forming, I'd like for them to come here and tell us why they want to form a union. I really would. I'd like for whoever's in charge of this, I'm asking, Dr. Law's not asking, I'm asking, for whoever's in charge of this, whoever wants to have a union, come tell me why. I would like to know, because if there's something that we're not doing, tell me. Don't just blindside me. I mean, I understand what you're saying. You're saying, people are saying, you know, what happened at Manatee and other colleges around us. Well, we're not Manatee. This is SPC. I think we've done our good job of trying to protect our employees and making sure they have the necessary tools, salary, and other things to do a good and capable job. So, Madam Chair, I want to ask that we play the other video clips, because there have been at least three or four more times that I have asked for adjunct, as well as full-time faculty and/or employees, to come and talk to us. So it's very ironic that the folks from the union, the people that have decided that they wanted a union, the faculty, the adjunct faculty, come here and say they want to be heard. I have asked for you to come and tell me what the issue is for about four or five years. Nobody has chosen to do that. Nobody. There's not been one employee that has come before this board to say what the issues are. But instead, you unionize, and then you can't accept that we haven't heard anything about any of this, or anything that you've wanted over the last, at least, that's five years ago. That's 2016. So that's five years ago. Over the last five years, I've had an open door, and nobody has come forward. Nobody. Now everybody wants to be heard, or they think that we should do what they want us to do. Quite frankly, I'm going to tell you, I've gotten nothing but form letters and one threat from a person that is in the union supposedly. And then, I do want to recognize one lady, though. I saved her letter, because she did not take the issue of, or take the issue to the extent where she just did a form letter. She actually wrote her own letter, and I appreciate that, because there were some good facts in that particular letter. Her name is Michaela, here it is, Michaela, oh, Michaela Oberleander? And I want to praise her for doing that, because she wrote her own letter, she had it filled with what I believe were facts, and how she really felt. But instead, what I've been getting is a bully tactic from the union with chain letters, and then one person told me, "I'm never going to be anything in this community, because the union and their members will see fit to it." So, that's fine, I don't really mind all that, but I will tell you this, wanting to be heard is something that I've asked for you all to do, to come and talk to us. The letters, they don't show me that we're working to be a family. It shows me that you're working for a cause that only benefits you and your particular effort. You know, the board, as a collective body, chose not to accept that contract. We told you that we would get back together within the 90 days, but I have gotten, the interesting thing is, I have gotten calls from legislators all across the state who are my friends, and I'm very well-respected with them, and when I explain the issue and that I've asked for folks to come forward, they simply say, "I'm done. I did not know that." Those are not the facts that I've gotten. Don't mischaracterize this issue. Don't go around and try to make sure that people are only on your side. Give the total facts. Give all the facts. Be open and transparent is what you're asking us to be. Be the same. Do the same things that you're asking us to do. Do those same things. Because at the end of the day, I'm raised by a Baptist preacher and a school teacher, and I'm going to tell you something, I'm going to do what's right, no matter what. I don't dance when there's no music, and I don't run from a fight. This is not, I'm not characterizing this as a fight, but what I will tell you is, I'm going to do what's right in every situation. You know, the timeline you've seen, even if you go back five years, nobody has come forward. So moving forward, I ask that we are transparent on both sides. Moving forward, I ask that we try to work together, really work together, and not just try to impose or enforce your will and treat the board members as if we don't know what we're talking about. I did not say that you all were getting a pay increase, so let's clarify that. But we are increasing the college's budget when we create a line. when we create a line item for one particular group of people when we have not created a line item for everybody else. I'm sure the IT guys back there would like for us to put a line in there, a line item in the budget for them if they have to work, you know, two hours over. But that's not how this works. In the beginning, there is something that, I mean, everybody accepts something based upon what they believe is true. When you got into the adjunct faculty role, there was no, there were no inhibitors for making sure that you didn't know what it entailed. Everybody knew what it entailed, just like in my job. I knew what it entailed when I got the job. I can't go back and change the rules to our CEO and say, "Well, I don't particularly care about, like, doing this part, and it's not fair that I do this part, so let me, I need an increase for that," or "I need to make sure that I'm compensated for that." No, I knew what I got myself into. There's a period where you go into things and you don't go into them blindly. In law, this is called the four corners of the contract. Everybody knew what the contract was when you got into it. Now, is that to say that it doesn't need to be changed over time? No, I'm not saying that. But what I am saying is, please characterize and tell the truth, and make sure that you have accurate facts. And finally, Madam Chair, I'll close on this. The young lady that spoke last today, thank you for doing that, but she gave me inaccurate facts the last time we spoke. On my way out the door, the last time, she told me that the adjunct faculty teaches more than 50% of the classes here at St. Pete College, and that's not true. I got the number. It's 41%. Okay? So, let's be, let's give the proper facts. I'm not saying that there's an increase in salary for you all and none for the full-time faculty. I'm not saying that you all are asking for a pay increase. I've never said that. What I said was, that is an increase to the college's budget. Which, by the way, if we forget or do something improper or wrong and don't notify you, any of you, meaning adjunct faculty, in time, if we don't notify you in time and we have to pay the $100 or $50 fee, guess what? That one person did get an increase in salary. That was an increase in salary. So, I'll leave it at that. I thank you for the time, but I think it's interesting that now we want to work together, but nobody beforehand would come and talk to anybody on this board. Ms. Bellows has been on this board longer than five years. Nate, you've been on the board longer than five years. I've been on the board 18 years, and nobody came forward. Nobody. I get so many professors, adjuncts, and full-time faculty, including staff, I think Dr. Williams and Rebecca, they get so tired of me during the week, because every time I go to Publix, I have, how many calls, Rebecca? At least 10 a week, where people are stopping me saying, "Hey, I need help with this at St. Pete College." I don't remember the last time that I didn't get somebody to one of you, or Dr. Law, or Dr. Cutler, and stayed intimately involved. In fact, the administration jumps all over me for staying too involved. Am I not right, Dr. Williams?
You are absolutely right.
Am I not right? Huh? You call me all the time saying, "Mr. Trustee, we have this. We're going to take care of this. We can figure..." So, to not come and see me is, to me, meaning that you never had the intentions on working together. You had a plan of action that you were going to go with no matter what. I've had people, Dr. Williams can tell you, show up at my house. I never get upset. I take the information, try to calm people down, and I get it to the proper people within the college, and we try to work with them to get things accomplished. So, Madam Chair, I don't want to belabor it out. I do have another appointment, but I wanted to be sure, to make sure that we have been on the record as willing to work with any and everybody, no matter who they are. I remember Roy, what's his name? Roy. Roy Slater was in South Africa with me. And the whole time, we talked about this union thing, and that had to be eight years ago now, seven or eight years ago. That's all he talked about. And I told him, I said, "Roy, if there's an issue, let's talk through it." And he did. He gave me some issues. I went right back to Dr. Law at the time, and I said, "Man, these are the things that I'm hearing." So, for me, I'm really upset. I hope you guys see this, that I'm upset. Not only upset, I'm hurt, because I don't mind getting into a fight with the best of them, right? And I don't mind losing the fight. You'll know you've been in the fight. I mean, I can assure you of that, but I will tell you that I think that I've been a pretty open book in terms of helping people and trying to help do what's right for the college long-term. There is no way this college survives without quality teaching and instruction by adjuncts and full-time faculty. Okay? There is no way this college survives that. But I will tell you, there's a way to do everything. My father has taught me, my grandfather have taught me, that you work with people. Don't formulate your own opinions and do things behind their back, and then expect them to take it kindly when you haven't even given them the opportunity to fix it. And that's what I'm saying here today. We were never given the opportunity to do these things without a union. To have our chair and the president come and try to talk to the full-time faculty, and they tell them, "Don't worry about it. Don't come unless you're going to do certain things." That is not open and transparent. That's not. I don't care who you are, I mean, that's just not open and transparent. At least come, listen, hear each other out, and then let's figure out if we can work together or not. If the union was formed after, and after we had had a discussion and you found that you could not make headway as an adjunct group with faculty, I mean, with the administration and the board, I would have been more than happy to support you in that effort. I still support you in the effort, because you've done it. There's nothing I can do. But I will tell you that now you have made it to where we have to make the best decisions for the entire college and do what's right for everybody all together at the same time. So, Madam Chair, thank you for the time. Thank you for the folks that came today. It is the first time that people have actually come to this board to express how they feel. I just feel bad that it has to be after you've already made a decision on what route you've gone to take that you're going to take moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Gibbons. Dr. Williams, I think we still have your president's report for the meeting.
Thank you. I want to let you know where we are legislatively.
Do I need to formally close public comment?
Yes. Yes.
Do we need a motion or a regislate?
Regislate.
Public comments closed.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. We've been spending time on Zoom, working with our legislative delegation. We've met with each of the Pinellas County delegates except one, two, and we're working on that. But I want to let you know, the two bills that we had Capital City share with you that we were focusing on for this session have already moved forward. They're in the House and the Senate, so we're moving on that, and we're still working to make sure that our voice is heard in reference to keeping our base, which is very important. If we can at least hold on to that for us to move forward in understanding all of the other cuts that are forthcoming as well. And so, on the legislative side, we're moving forward. We're going to have to have some Zoom meetings with you guys and legislators. I think it's going to be harder to walk the halls in Tallahassee like we've done. It's not going to happen. So, we'll be having those Zoom meetings to talk about the college moving forward. The other part of my report was going to be where we are with both the adjunct and the full-time faculty union. I think that we've spoken about the adjunct union, and we've handled that, but on the full-time faculty union, as Chair Cole mentioned, in October, I reached out to the full-time faculty union supporters once I heard that things were moving in that direction to learn from them what the issues were. And to be extremely transparent, both Dr. Liao Troth and myself and Chair Cole was invited to join, because I wanted to make sure that the full-time faculty did not feel that we were not being transparent. And if you bring your boss to the meeting not knowing what's going to be said, I think that's pretty genuine and very transparent. And so, we did talk through October, November, trying to get the meeting scheduled. We didn't get it scheduled until December. When we got to the meeting, we were, I was asked to recognize the union and forego the vote. And verbally, I did share that I would think about that. I also said I didn't think I would, but in January, I did send an email out to the faculty saying that I would not recognize the union and not forego the normal process for faculty to exercise their right to vote. And from that, I received some feedback of faculty thanking me to be able to vote, that they want to have the right to do that. I am still working on a strategy to get the faculty to sit with me to tell me what the issues really are. And I'm not going to stop. I'm not going to stop them from voting or unionizing. I just think as president, I should be able to know what that is. That was the reason, in October, I reached out intentionally, and I sent the email to all of the union supporters to be transparent, and I copied the board chair as well on those emails to make sure that I was not being perceived as the president trying to stop anything, because that was not the case. So, where we are right now with the full-time faculty union is we're working on who can be in the bargaining, who can be in the voting unit. And so, our attorneys and Dr. Liao Troth are working with UFF, and we've had, I'm going to read it, because I want to make sure I say it right. We have had our first meeting with PERC. Our first hearing was July 29th to see who should be in the bargaining unit of full-time faculty to be able to vote. We should have another meeting on the 19th where we will be able to give testimony on our position. And following that, we'll see where we land, and we'll keep going back and forth, and we'll keep you noticed on where we are. And I will continue to find ways to reach out to our faculty. We continue to have meetings. Our last town hall was an open mic where people can speak and say what their concerns are. We'll be having another one, I think, at the end of this month. And so, we'll continue to move forward to hear our full-time faculty as well and continue to work with our adjuncts in good faith, and we'll continue to move forward in that vein. That's how we work.
Can we notice that meeting, and has any trustee that would like to attend, attend?
Sure.
That way, we can actually come and hear what people have to say.
I think that's great.
All right.
I have no problem with that. Thank you.
I still want to be on the record, Dr. Williams and Madam Chair and the rest of the board, and I'm again asking, for full-time faculty, before you make a decision, please come to the board and talk to us.
Could you just add the president in on that, please?
Add the president, whoever you find. If you find him in the grocery store, wherever. Come, talk to somebody, and give us an opportunity to talk through the issues prior to any actions being made. So, again, I am asking full-time faculty members, before you make any decisions based upon anything else, come and talk to the president, the chairperson, or any board member, and let us be able to have an open dialogue and work on it. Because, you know, you catch more bees with honey than you do with flies with honey than you do with, you know, other stuff. So, all right.
Okay. And that's my report. Thank you. Are there any other business of the trustees? With that, our next meeting is on March 23rd, and we will see you at Clearwater Campus. Thank you.